You're gonna have to write on the board. Go to the board, work the problem.
He just gave me flashbacks.
I know.
We want to welcome everybody to the Paclit candidate debate. We have candidates here today for council seats and we also have all three of our mayor candidates. Don't get these names wrong. We have our incumbent mayor Ned Camby, we have Brett Frady, and we have David Pannell. Also for District One, we have Jason Wright Williams today. We're gonna get started. First of all, each candidate will stand and present their platform, their campaign, they'll have five minutes. Each candidate will do that and then we'll have to answer questions afterwards. We're not gonna do questions between each candidate. We'll wait and then do that, alright? Alright, let's open in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the opportunity to come together. We ask you, Lord, that you would bless everyone here and that everything we do and say would be honoring to you. We ask these things in Jesus' name, amen. Alright. We're gonna start with Mr. Frady.
Wherever you want, wherever you want us to go. For those of y'all that don't know me, my name is Brett Frady. I grew up not far up the road, I've lived down here in Paclit for about eleven or twelve years now. I've got, I worked in project management for about ten years in the oil and gas industry and for the last year or so, I own my own business in the fabrication, welding, and then we also own Mulchard Landscape Supplies and stuff like that. In my time in oil and gas, a lot of, put in a lot of several multi-million dollar projects and we came in on time, under budget on a whole bunch of them. I really, I really like what the town's doing right now, what the council's doing down here right now. I'd like to be a part of it. I feel like with my leadership skills and my management skills that I could, I could be an asset to what they have going on potentially. And that's, that's pretty much where I'm at with it. I mean, I'm not here to tell that anybody's doing anything bad or doing anything wrong or that I would do any better job than anyone else is doing. I just like to be a part of what they do have going on and I feel like that I could team up with them and potentially be an asset to them. That's pretty much all I can say.
Alright, well, thank you. Our next candidate is Mr. David Pannell, Pannell.
Hey, everybody. I'm David Pannell, for those of you that don't know me, I was born and raised here, lived here my whole life. I work in automotive industries, you know, I own Pannell Automotive in Paclit, I've had business down here several times before. And primarily, my goal, my vision is, is basically, I just wanna include everybody. I would like to get out and talk to the people, go to organizations, churches. I wanna get out, I wanna talk to everybody and you know, if there's any major decisions to be made, whether it be taxes, whether it be major events, just anything, I would like to at least get people's feedback. I know primarily we're a weak mayor system, there's not a whole lot that I can do rather than bring it to the council, talk to everybody, see what's going on. I'm understanding that completely and I understand the way things are running and I don't really have a problem with it whatsoever. I just want to include everybody and everybody that pays taxes, I want them to feel like they have a say because I never have been contacted one time myself, you know, by anything, anything, the way things are going. So, I would like to get the community involved, that's the main thing. And I know that you really don't gain any power with this position, that's not what I'm looking for. I'm looking primarily to get that title and if I had that title, people would be willing to talk to me. And when you go in, it's gonna make them feel like you really care because you wanna show them that, you know, their thoughts, their issues, it's something that you will address and you wanna spread it out. You can't make everybody happy and I'm not under that assumption, I realize that. But including everybody is a major asset and that's primarily my platform and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pannell. Mayor Camby.
Hey, I'm Mayor Camby and I'd like to thank the Fire Department for having us today and those that arranged the session. And I'm proud to have been the mayor for the last year and a half. First, I'd like to help you understand our form of government in our town. We were governed under council and a form of government which is composed of mayor and six council members. Better known as our own council week mayor. And being said, the responsibilities of the mayor are, number one, preside over the council meetings, represent the town for, on all ceremonial events, sign all bonds, documents, and papers on behalf of town council. The mayor serves as one voting member of overall town council and is the face of Paclit. So, all of us running the mayor can't get up here and promise you all, the whole world, you know, the mayor and council work together to pass all legislation, any ideas that come before us. And do I have my own dreams and my own ideas? Yeah, sure I do. The council and the mayor work together to make these ideas come about. What we do is have a planning session and prioritize these ideas and then work with the town administrator finding ways to accomplish them. For instance, we just come off of a very successful Paclit River Festival. Did I do this as a mayor? No, I didn't do this just as a mayor. We as a council and mayor decided we wanted a better, more successful fall festival. We, we in turn conveyed this to the town administrator, she was given the task to make the, you know, the festival come about. She formed a committee and they worked together and she, she and the committee had did a fantastic job. This is the way most things happen with council, mayor, form of government. You know, we set goals, we prioritize them, we had a planning session this past year. Some of the ideas that we come up with was exploring opportunities to complete this cloth room, exploring possible programs and litter pickup for the litter promotions. Continue, continue current efforts to step up enforcement of nuisance property. And some ideas that come along during the year that we've done, that we've done is we're planning and we'll have a mountain bike trail soon, thanks to Milligan, Lyles Construction, Parks and Rec, and several other people. We just received a grant to improve the electrical issues at the amphitheater. We have ordered and expect new trash cans and to be delivered in the next month or so. We have a thing before us, there's a deal before us that we haven't finalized yet, but we will be having a new park here in town. I've been asked and why I decided to run as a write-in for mayor and why I didn't register in timeframe. My thought process at the time was I wanted several people to step up and get involved. I thought there would be more than one candidate. You see, I don't believe we should have just one choice, somebody running unopposed. If we only had one person running unopposed, we wouldn't have a choice and to me, that's not democracy. We, we wouldn't want to only have one person running for president, would we? I was asked and if I was qualified or am I prepared, since I'm a write-in candidate. First, am I prepared? I think I'm, my on-the-job training for the last year has prepared me for the job. Plus, I've taken the courses offered by the municipal association and they have been immensely helpful. Am I qualified? I'm a lifelong resident of Paclit. I've served and been chairman of the board of District Three School Board Trustees. I've been chairman of Paclit Mills Baptist Church Deacon Board. I've been a salesman and store manager for three different major paint manufacturers in North and South Carolina. I was an estimator for a large commercial industrial paint contractor in Greenville. I served eleven and a half years in National Guard. I own my own small business, commercial and residential paint business. I've helped with the blessings and the backpack program that provide the food for our schools and students. I was graduated from Paclit High School, attended Cecil's Business College, married to my beautiful and lovely wife Donna for fifty-three years. We have two grown childrens and four grandchildren. I've been the face of Paclit for the past one and a half years and I hope I've made all of you proud to have a mayor of integrity and listens and humble assurance.
Thank you, Mayor Camby. Our next person to speak is running for District One, he's the only candidate that could make it today, and it's Councilman Wright.
I'm Jason Wright, I've been, I've been District One Councilman for almost four years now. But when I, when I decided to do it, I was actually asked in the beginning, mainly because of the experiences I have in the past with business and law and such. The biggest idea behind it was is getting the council where it, where it used to be was, the system was, was not, it was not the way it should be. Not that it was illegal or anything, but it just wasn't handled correctly. So, the idea initially was to establish some kind of format where it's handled the way the law says it's supposed to be handled. Roberts rules, so on and so forth. And then I noticed very, in the very beginning, right off, that there was no way to manage the town. Absolutely no way that this town could manage itself, its employees, or anything of that sort. So, the next thing I decided was we had to have an administrator. So, it took, I don't know, two or three months to figure out how we were gonna find the monies. We found the money, we hired one, he left and then we hired another one afterwards. And she's turned out very well, has done a lot for this town. The, the major things that, that I think still that we need to change is like beautification of the town, you know. Chris Harris was telling me the other day that signs, when you come to an intersection, there's five signposts. I mean, it's, it's very easy, we could find somebody to go with the DOT and ask them, like, put them all on one. But something simple like that to beautify the town would help, you know, it would help the morale, it would help people wanna come here. But keep the town simple, you know, and small. It doesn't have to be the next Spartanburg, it doesn't have to be anything like that. It needs to be a community of arts and entertainment and, you know, just wonderful joy where there's, there's so many, there's so many things to do in this town, so many places to go in this town. You've got plenty of churches, you've got plenty of water, you've got plenty of activity, there's so much already there. It's just keeping the people that will have the ideas in place to have the idea. Anybody can be on the council, anybody can be the mayor. The biggest issue is, is if you're going to be in the seat and you have the idea, you can't just have the idea, you have to have a solution and you have to know how to facilitate that solution as well. Know some people, know how to go about it, know what the laws are. The laws are the biggest things. Can you do it? What's the liability of it? What's the risk of it? So on and so forth. And to me, it's, it's important because if you don't know that, then you put yourself at risk. The town itself is at risk and then liability's past that. So, basically, my platform is, I've been here for four years, I've made a lot of changes, made a lot of differences. I feel like there's still a lot more changes that can be made, more to come. I know that I don't have everybody's idea, but I'm always willing to talk to anybody. I come to every meeting that the public would like to talk at. I'm, my, everybody in my area knows probably where I live. If you don't, I'll give you my address. My email's on the website, anybody can ask a question anytime they want, I'm free to give you any answers. And if I don't know the answer, right then, I will find out and I will, I will surely get back to you. But I asked for your vote on Tuesday, of course. I'd like to keep helping the town the way I have. I don't do it for money, I always donate back every bit of the money that the town pays me and then some. My time, I don't have a problem at all with my time, I give back more than I probably ever thought I would, but I'm okay with it. I enjoy doing what I can for the town. And any candidate, I would hope, would do the same thing. Anybody that is actually chosen to be District One, I'm forward with it. I hope they can come maybe one of my new best friends, you know, because I would still like to help them as well. If I can, if they wanted, but that's where I'm at. I love the town of Paclit, I'm probably gonna live here the rest of my life. Help any neighbor I can, do anything I can for anybody in this town. Anybody ever wants to talk, let me know. You can get ahold of me in many different ways, so I appreciate your time and of course, Mr. Moss, thank you for your time as well. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen. We're going to move on to the questions and answer session. Please be recognized, don't shout questions. If you have a question for a specific candidate, just let us know. We're gonna open the floor for questions. If anybody has any, raise your hand or stand. No questions for anybody? Yes.
I've noticed that in the past, we've had a bad problem, it seemed to escalate with drugs. Almost eighty percent of the crimes, I've noticed, at least, I've probably been considered with that number. But almost everything is housebreaking too, cars stolen, shot, lived, and it all comes back to that. I mean, you can trace it back. And those, those operations in this town, everybody knows where they're at, people talk on Facebook, their wife knows it, their, their, I mean, their friends talk about it, they're talking about, these are drug houses, still. I don't know why they even shut down, I mean, it's ridiculous. Everybody says, you can't just run up in there. I understand that, you gotta field a case. I don't wanna take a field case on you. If they've been twenty cars down this road today, come on, you know what I'm saying, come on. Be honest, this is a dope house. I mean, we might not can't just run up in the house, but you can pull them over and read and we'll tell or something to be done, I think. And that's where vandalism's come back, almost everything has happened, you can trace it back. You gotta cut that out, if it ain't gonna be cut out, I mean, you're just gonna continue to have a bad community and more crime. I mean, it's, you gotta get that out of there. I mean, you got new stuff between buildings, and I'm not taking anything back, what the council's done did it. I mean, they, they've made, they've made nice things, but then nice things can continue to get tore up. I mean, I mean, we're down here getting still spray painted, you know, that's ridiculous. Somebody need to be able to count it for and they need to stop that kind of stuff on a regular basis. I just feel like, I would like to know what need, what the plans are, ideas to be done to stop that kind of ridiculousness going on in the neighborhood. I mean, I don't understand they swung crime, it doesn't matter what they do, but it's a big problem. And it is never community, I understand that, but that ain't like me, that ain't like me. I wanna see what happened there.
Gentlemen.
I'll say, I've asked that same question myself before and I was told that I actually had to catch them in the act. They couldn't just go in and do something without catching them in the act or it actually happening. But I have noticed that the council meetings that I have attended, that they seem to be providing the police here with the tools they need to work with and they've spent a lot of money on them to get them new things and put the right people in place. And I feel like they're making some improvements on that currently and I think we should continue the culture that this ball's rolling now just to continue with that, is my opinion.
So, initially, I didn't feel as if our police department at the time was up to par with the way it should have been. There was a lack of unity with other departments, they didn't work with other departments as well as they probably should have. The sheriff's department seemed to not come around as often. They didn't really work together with them on a lot of things. Now, I'm not saying that it didn't happen at all, but it did happen, but not as often as it probably should have. What I, what I, what me and, and the other council people at the time talked about was, we have to do something with our department, that we have to find a chief, we have to find somebody that can take leadership of that department and find some officers that understand the laws, understand their role in the community, and that can make a difference. And it's taken a while, Chief Alexander, the current chief, wonderful guy, knows exactly what he's doing and making every possible step towards curbing some of these small crimes and vandalisms and drugs as well. Arrests have, have gone up, I don't know a percentage, but I want to say, three years prior to Alexander being here, there were zero arrests, maybe, maybe one or two. Since he's been here, there's, there's four or five times that amount every month. So, what I, what I can say is, these officers that we currently have, the department that we currently have, yes, we're upgrading their equipment, yes, we're upgrading their cars, they are upgrading themselves with education. The, the chief is finding every way he can to get the officers to do, you know, their very best. We're also looking right now to try to look at the budget to see if we can afford another officer because the budget is the only thing that controls how many officers are available in the town. That's, that's one of the biggest things is, is getting the officers to, out there and to see everything. Now, of course, you're right, they don't necessarily have to catch them in the act.
Thank you, Councilman, we're gonna stop you there.
Okay.
Mr. Pannell.
I believe the best action we could probably take is to try to have a better relationship with the county. And if we could get the county to come in and have that tight-knit relationship with them, we'd be more likely to be able to do it because they have far more services, far more availability to funding to be able to handle that kind of problem than just the town. I agree, the town needs to do it, but I believe the county's definitely gonna be the way to go. If we can make that connection, and we need to make a solid connection with the county. I think that they need to be around as often as they can be and I believe it'll greatly improve it.
Mayor Camby.
I think so too, you know, we are working with the county more, like Councilman Wright said, we're working more with the county and we're getting better relationships with them. And, but one of the things is, we hadn't touched on is the system. You know, we can arrest these people, and we do arrest these people, you know, they're back on the street the next day, you know. It's, it's not just our problem, it's the whole system's problem. Yeah, we are arresting and we keep, and we're not stopping the, the arresting them. We're still, it improves about every month, you know, we're arresting people and I think we, we should continue that. The more we keep them under our thumb, then we can, you know, can control them in the future.
Next question.
Well, I don't have a question, but I got a little bit of feedback. I'm not from around here, but I live here now, right down the street, matter of fact. Our community had a big outreach when it recomed to crime because that made, one of my major problems. Matter of fact, me and my wife today had to fix our whole back fence, somebody kicked it in. A lot of traffic in between, I know that we got some problems in our, in our, my neck of the woods now. I didn't know when I moved here, but I know now, living here, you know, that was a little bit of a surprise to me. But there are things that can be done beyond having the people to walk the streets and that is notification or display of poor behavior. I come from Massachusetts, we used to have a captain in our department that popularized the problems. So, we knew names, we knew people in the community that were having problems. This isn't the greatest way, but Shane can, can really assist in that thing. Is there any, you know, I know that we have a little bit of, little bit of social media display for the town. I think that you have your Facebook, I know we've interacted on a couple of occasions through Facebook with the town. But what are the things that you, you know, these small things, these social media, you know, systems that they have, are there, what are your plans to use those, you know, and those are, those are the things I'd like to know. What's, what's the out, because really outreach, just in the sense of getting people to know what's going on and know, know what things are happening in the town. Because our, you know, a sign on a, on a billboard does so much. But now we have all, you know, everybody's carrying a phone, everybody's looking at their phones. What are we doing to reach out like that? And those are the things I would like to know. What's your, what's your social, what's, how are you gonna reach the people? What's your plan?
Like posting arrests possibly, you know, when someone's arrested for drugs. Posted on the Paclit, the town Paclit webpage or something like that.
I think that's a great idea to, the rest of them, they can put the mug shots on there for their town to see. I mean, because without going to look it up on the jail website, you don't see them. I personally think that's a great idea, but also, I feel like the town does post like when they're gonna have meetings and the goings-on of the town. One thing I think, or I would like to see, you know, is maybe at the council meetings where Facebook Live, kind of like what we're doing now, people that couldn't attend them could, I don't know the legality of that, but I think that would be a great idea moving forward.
Mr. Pannell.
I think it'd be a great idea to post it, it'd obviously be free, I think it would be effective. It's, it's totally gonna change people's whole perception if they have the idea that they're gonna be posted publicly. If they know they're gonna be publicly out there, they're ten times less likely to do it. It's just like open carry, if you have open carry, people's not gonna make mistakes. I mean, they're gonna know that everybody has a potential to look at them and know that they don't wanna deal with them. It's just gonna be that simple and I believe it'd make a tremendous difference. I believe anything that we could do, there really wouldn't be any cost, it would just take a small amount of time. Like you said, advertising locally might be a great thing. I believe talking to everybody, just to put everybody on notice. So, like you said, I think the churches, organizations, all of it would be a great idea.
Mayor Camby.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am, you certainly can.
As a former school teacher, I know that the government controls a lot of what we're allowed to do and not allowed to do. And I don't, while this sounds like a wonderful idea, I think the council or somebody on the council probably needs to look into the legality of that sort of thing because we certainly don't wanna be sued of or something like that.
It's in jail birds.
If it's in, if they've been arrested, they can, you know, you can post it. You know, like jail bird and things like that, those papers and things like, it can be posted. It's been posted in a newspaper like jail bird, it can be posted online. But we, we should be careful in the way how we do it, but I think it would be good to have that. It's a good idea, I think we should post that. You know, in the past, businesses and all, you know, all the business ramp, if they have a bad check or something like that, they put it up on their, on their boards and I don't see why we couldn't do something like that too, that'd be a good idea.
Thank you. Councilman Wright.
Yeah, I, I, I immediately thought guilty until proven innocent. Seems, that's, that's the way that seems to me. You go to court to make sure that you are guilty or not guilty. So, getting arrested and then your picture being posted somewhere. I know that the jails are allowed to do it because it's, it's for inmate searches, for family members to find out if somebody's there or something of that sort. I don't know the legality, like you said, if the town is allowed to do such a thing. But I know that civically, there could be somebody in town that created a page just to show who from Paclit was arrested. It's sort of like the Crime Watch system that we already have. There's a Crime Watch system and the chief himself gets text messages off of the police department's Facebook page and there's also a way to text into the police department to notify them that you saw somebody doing something or that you know that this property is a drug house or something of that sort, you know. I, I do believe that Shane is a very defining factor in somebody's decision whether to commit a crime or not.
I just saw, it worked in a, in an area that I lived in and I think it worked very well for a period of time. And eventually it did, it whittled away because, you know, people didn't, you know, it just, in a scenario where, you know, faces, you know, you're, we're a very small community.
That's correct, yeah.
You know, you're not gonna want to, you know, re-
You know, you're not gonna want to, uh, you know, re, maybe assert yourself in a, in a situation that you, it may be, you know, had known to do it, you know?
Was that handled by the, um, town that you were from or?
It was handled, I believe by the police department and at, at that time. The police chief was the one that would make the, he would do, uh, small cable shows and stuff like that going through the, the, you know, you know, various different things, but it, it did seem to make a huge impact on, on a community that was wrought with a lot of problems, you know? And it was one avenue, and I, I think you guys, we, you guys have a lot of problems, you know? There's a very small section of it that I feel and I've seen, and yeah, it, you know, I, you know, not the, not saying that bad, I love the community, but I didn't expect it when I, when I moved here. I didn't expect what, what's been happening.
And we're already invested in the town, we own a couple of properties here, you know, so now we're like, oh, what do we do, you know? hindsight.
I think, uh, I think that's a great idea, maybe we could easily talk to the police chief and find out if he's, if he's willing to do it. Whether the legality of the town itself, but the chief, if there's maybe something that he can do on his personal time or get the department involved in creating something, that would be a great idea, I mean, absolutely. And, and that's something that I'm sure next Thursday we'll, we'll bring up, you know? Or if you, if you'd like to come to the town council meeting and, and say it yourself, that would be great. So that he gets it from, from somebody in the public as opposed to us, you know, I mean, which is fine, we can do it. But I would love to see more people at our town meetings so that they understand the form and function and how to deliver your ideas from the public to the council and those departments as well, you know? I think it'd be a great idea.
And let me add to that, uh, uh, like Brett said, you know, we probably need to livestream. We've looked into livestreaming before, we're gonna try to get the livestreaming on the, uh, council meetings, that would be a good thing to have too.
That would include all the community that don't give up.
Next question. Any questions?
I, I just kind of have a statement. As he said, we just recently moved here. Well, we owned property here for a few years, but we just physically made packlet our residence. And I feel like a lot of the issues that are happening in Spartanburg are kind of trickling out. Two packlet homelessness, the drugs, you know, from what I understand, behind the Dollar General, there is a very large, um, homeless encampment or something going on back there that I feel it's private property regardless if it's a store, they should be removed. I mean, I'm sorry they're homeless, go somewhere else, don't come to our little community. Um, another problem that I've seen is littering, is like everywhere you go is trash. And if people would just pick up the trash that people throw in your front yard, would make such a big difference. You know, once a week, five minutes, go out there, you know? One or two or three people going out there, they have bags at the, at the town building, they have grabbers. I went and got some myself, I got orange bags, I got some grabbers, go out there. You leave them on the side of the road and the trashmen are supposed to pick them up. Well, I have a friend who did that last week, while the trash came through, picked up all the trash and left the orange bags, that she picked up the trash. You know, the sanitation department here is kind of lax. Those are just some issues that I've seen personally. Like I said, we've been owning property for a few years here, so I've spent a lot of time here. Um, and those are just some things that, that we, that I've noticed, coming, being a new resident of the town.
Anyone else to address sanitation?
I do know that they recently commissioned a code enforcement officer, and I think that's just getting off the ground, but I think there'll be some changes seen pretty soon with that going on. Another thing, that's not something that one sole council member, mayor, anything's gonna fix. That's gonna take a whole community involvement and people actually take pride in where they live. And I think with a lot of the projects and stuff that's going on right now, that's gonna increase the pride. And I mean, I mean, at the end of the day, it's come down to each individual person taking pride in their piece of property and, you know, what was for the best, and, you know, that's not easily fixed.
Well, that, again, can go back to the drug issue.
Yes, ma'am.
You arrest these people for drugs, get them out there to do community service to pick up the litter. You know what I mean? It can kind of go hands in hand if you, if you make it, you know what I'm saying? Um, 'cause honestly, these people that are doing the drugs are part of the problem with the litter.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, they just, they don't care about themselves and they don't care about the community, unfortunately, it's, it's unfortunate.
I think we should lead by example. I, I myself, as much as anybody else, I think if we get out and do it ourselves, start picking up some of this garbage, start making a difference, hopefully everybody else will follow suit. And, uh, I'm myself willing to do that, and I think I can get a lot of other people to try to help out as well.
Mayor Campbell.
That's a problem, and we're working on it, we have had, uh, uh, projects in the, uh, past that nobody shows up for. You know, we've had, uh, groups to get together. It happened the first couple of times and it's okay, but then it just kind of dwindled out. Um, with these guys, you know, we, uh, we, I as an individual, probably more helpful than, uh, uh, the council or the mayor or whatever, you know, but, uh, getting out and doing your own and having pride in your community, uh, and I think, you know, that'd go a long way.
Councilman.
I think, I think it's very important, the community, there's people in the community that are willing to organize such a thing. The town, we, we, we talked about this several years ago, the town trying to facilitate a trash pickup of, of some sorts. Liabilities is, is what prevents the town itself from organizing that and, and like asking people in the community to come out and do it. So what, what we tried to do was just find individuals that were willing to do it themselves and just organize it, and, and, and it worked great, but then those individuals moved on to different projects and, and then no other individual has really stepped up to, 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 to do a major cleanup type thing. Now, there's a lot of people in this town that pick up trash, such as yourself, that you don't mind walking out and picking up trash. I know that, I know that like our sanitation department, they were told three years ago that if there's an orange bag within the town's limits, uh, or in certain roadways or so on so forth, that they must pick it up. I don't know where those bags were, maybe that wasn't the trash day, or I'm not really sure what the circumstances, but those guys are, have really stepped up recently. Other than some sicknesses, you know, they've, they've done a really great job. We have taken a four-day trash route, turned it into a three-day trash route so that they have two other days to do other stuff. Limbs, uh, you know, clean up some of the gutters, pick up trash, you know, so, so they're being managed a lot better than, than they, than they were prior to an administrator system. So I think the, the biggest thing is maybe we could find somebody in the community that wanted to like, you know, get out there and organize something, that would be great. And, and I, of course, I'd sign up immediately, I mean, I'll, I'll help anybody do anything.
I had actually, um, had a conversation with the town administrator, of Apple there. You know, like I said, I went and I got bags and I got grabbers and, um, I did have a conversation with, she pretty much said the same thing you said. But I, I think everybody just kind of needs to come together and just get it done and get some business that like have the first Saturday every month or something, that's what we do, and make hot dogs and give them water or whatever, and have the businesses contribute to be able to do something like that. So they feel like, you know, they're making a difference and they're getting a little bit in return, you know?
I think once a month, there should be a meeting like this, a public forum meeting. You can't have all of the council people in one room. If you get more than three, then it's a core. So if you could, we could schedule like, hey, this month, district one, three and five, next month, district, you see what I'm saying? Um, stagger it out a little bit, so people that come can actually meet their council person, ask them questions, uh, meet the mayor, ask questions, and, and, and maybe talk to a police officer that's here at the time or something that we've been asking the public for, for, for years now. Anytime you guys want to ask a question or have a public meeting, let's do it, you know? I'll come to every one of them, because I enjoy this. I think it's necessary the town tell me what they think and feel so that we can facilitate your ideas a little bit better within the town's government.
Next question. Yes, sir.
I'm Ron Ramsey. I appreciate the city town hiring a code enforcement officer. I'd like to know what your priorities for that code enforcement officer are. Why is it gonna be his top priority, once he gets on the street and starts working?
I didn't understand it. What was that?
The town just hired a code enforcement officer, I don't know what his priority, his enforcement priorities are gonna be. Like these houses that aren't up to code, the trash in these yards, uncut yards, things like that. That's got a lot to do with morale of the town. Clean these properties up, get it looking good, maybe it'll help the town out.
I'm not completely educated on what all the ordinances are, but I know he'll be enforcing the ordinances that are there. I personally would like to see some of the cars that don't run and have been sitting there with weeds growing around them for years. I like to see stuff, people held accountable for that and stuff like that, away from yards. The yards that are full of trash and not kept cut and just completely unkempt, I'd like to see a lot of them cleaned up and a lot of the abandoned houses down there, whoever owns them, being held accountable. Even if it's abandoned house, they need to at least dress the yard up and keep the grass cut and stuff like that, me personally.
I think this kind of runs into the last question a little bit too. If they would start handing out these fines for these things as far as the litter, try to enforce it. There's spots, it's hotspots, they could set it. I mean, there's no doubt our police could get fined after fined all they wanted to if they would just pick these hotspots. Uh, as far as the enforcement officer, um, like you said, junk sitting in yards, uh, houses that's caving in on themselves. These are all things that I personally would like to see corrected and dealt with. I'm not sure exactly what, uh, the situation is right now as far as what's in process. But I would definitely like to see especially the dilapidated houses and junk piles in people's yards. Uh, I mean, the grass is a situation, for right now, we could get by with the grass if we had to. I say we deal with the most important things, things is really a safety hazard first. If we could really deal with these safety hazards, it would improve our, our lives, I feel.
Mayor.
Okay, uh, yeah, we, we have a, a, a code enforcement officer. He'll be part-time, but, uh, uh, he's going through school and things like that right now. His priority will be those items you're talking about, he will, you know, he'll dress, you know, yards, uh, and, and, uh, like, uh, uh, Mr. Pannell said, you know, the safety, uh, once he'll probably hit the hardest. And, uh, and first off, um, I'm sure he, uh, he'll have his, uh, hands full and, and we have, uh, a new, uh, magistrate right now, and she is coming down pretty hard on those people too. And we, and that, that, uh, will help out too. If we let, just let them off, we, we can give them citations all they want, all you want to, but it's not enforced, then it's, it's no good. So, um, I think we've come a long way in that, uh, area and, uh, by hiring him, uh, we'll see an improvement on that.
Councilman.
I have a question.
Yes.
Again, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the town allowed to fine people for these violations, these kinds of violations?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, you are, okay, because sometimes they still don't clean it up, they'll pay the fine and just let it, let it sit. So what happens then?
Let me, uh, well, they go to the magistrate and his magistrate, uh, you know, uh, gives them a fine, you know, like, uh, five hundred dollars. If they pay that fine, as far as we can go, I mean, they can go back and not do the cleanup, you see. But if, uh, they, they get, you know, we'll write them another citation. If she, if they apply, uh, appear for the magistrate more than one time, she's probably gonna raise the, uh, uh, fine, you see. So yes, it's, you know, we can, we can do it, but you know, it's, it's a process, you know, it's not just, you know, and a lot of them play the process, you know, they, they say, well, we'll go and pay the two hundred dollars or fifty dollars or whatever the, the magistrate says, and then we won't do it. So then we gotta keep on doing it, that's what, that's the reason we hired, uh, a code enforcer. He will come, he'll, he'll know if it's not been cleaned up and he'll write another citation.
Councilman.
So previously, before we, before we hired our new judge, we had a backlog of over two hundred thousand dollars in unpaid fines. For whatever reason, I don't wanna disgrace anybody, but the backlog of fines is basically because they were not forced in one way or the other. But to jail, uh, anything, they weren't prescribed the medicine that they, that they needed to, to correct their actions. Currently, with our new judge, um, very, very kindly and sweetly, she will send you to California Highway, which is where the Sparta County, uh, jail is.
Who is that?
The, the magistrate.
Our new magistrate, who is that?
Yes, our new magistrate.
Make you smile.
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so she, she, she is helping that system a lot, great, a great deal. Mr. Ramsey, the code enforcement officer is half and half with the fire department and the town code enforcement. So he will be working not only with the town to its ordinances, but with the fire department as well. So that gives him a unique opportunity to see some, some corrections for the fire department that need to be made 'cause he can, he can issue, you know, notices like this, correct their, your flu pipe is too close to your roof line or something of that sort, as well as write a fine for your yard being too trashy. Uh, there's a washing machine that's sitting there and it's illegal because kids can climb in there and get trapped, you know, whatever the sort happened in the situation. Yes, he's being trained right now to be the code enforcement officer. He'll be working with the police department and of course with the magistrate system too. So with all these new systems in place, we're gonna see a lot of change in the cleanliness of people's yards. The dilapidated houses, the administrator is, has, has been working towards that. There's so much paperwork and so much time involved in it that, that she picking, we, we, we as a council help her pick, like this one is important, this one, so she picks two or three at a time to focus the effort on. The, the law allows us without great cost, two houses a year to be demolished without paying a lot in like lead fees and so on so forth, asbestos, things like that. So it is, it is important to, to time it correctly. Now, we are looking at certain houses that need to be taken down, but, but where are they and, and what shape are they in? Or are they, or what kind of hazard are they? Are there drug people living there, so on so forth? That, that's the biggest role.
Yeah, thirty seconds.
Okay, so basically, to, to answer your question, we're, we are making every effort possible to, to curb that. And the code enforcement officer, his role will be to facilitate all of those things.
And I'd like to add something to that, there's, um, now there's a way you can text on your phone if you see somebody's yard that needs to be cleaned up. If that goes to the code enforcement, and there's also a page on the packlet, um, town website where you can email requests, and it can all be anonymous, I mean, they're not gonna tell your neighbor that you said something about them. So, um, it's gonna take a little bit of time.
I'd like to see, I mean, police officers can write ordinances too.
Absolutely.
Why they're out on patrol, why don't they stop by these places? Give them a warning first, uh, get this washing machine out of your yard, a little bit more proactive law enforcement.
Yeah.
I've got cameras on my head, and I can tell you the number of times officers come out of my house and it's, you know.
Right.
They just don't seem to be actively controlling the area in this small town. They should have come out of my house three times this year.
So what I know from, from the police department now, the current chief has given like each officer, this is an area that I want you to focus on, another officer gets this area. I don't know if it's by districts, 'cause we don't get involved in what the police tells, the chief tells his officers. But, but I know that he's given each officer areas to focus his efforts on. Uh, and then he reviews, you know, what efforts they do make afterward, not us.
Sir.
Yeah, finally, I'm here, Stone Street, uh, just two questions actually. Uh, do y'all know the timeline for the new apartments getting built and then what's gonna be involved and all that? And, uh, is packet wheel still a pilgrimage place for these old houses?
Uh, council members would not let, uh, uh, I'd like to answer the question.
Uh, we, uh, we have been in touch with the people building the apartments. They've given us, uh, several deadlines, uh, they met, not met with them, and, uh, but, uh, you know, we were talking outside just a few minutes ago, it might be because of, uh, shortages in supplies they had, I don't know. Uh, but, uh, we were supposed to be open in September, they were supposed to be taking applications and all soon after that or right along with it, but, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly when they will be open. Looks like they're beginning to, uh, grade and, uh, uh, have, uh, parking areas.
They still have a lot of money there, they do.
Yeah, and, uh, but, uh, and what was your second question now? Oh, oh, we have a pilgrimage place? Yes, we still have a pilgrimage place.
Does that come into consideration when you kind of turn down some of these old houses? I mean, 'cause I, I had one almost do that later. I mean, because I, I had one almost do that play and I really feel the fact, so they're not all bad on you, so.
So, the, the pilgrimage of place, uh, the, the, the guidelines, I think is what you're referring to, right?
Oh, yeah, they just.
The historic guidelines and such. Yes, so that, that is not a, uh, a, a mandate technically. It's not been adopted by the town saying that you cannot change the facade of your house unless it mimics what used to be and how, what color, so on so forth. You can put vinyl siding, uh, you can do as you please to your own property. Whenever we look at a structure to condemn or to take, you know, because of fines or so on so forth, basically, we look at it and, and we, we intend not to tear it down as much as possible. If we can, if it can be saved, then we would absolutely do so. The two houses that we have taken down were burnt excessively and they, they were not able to be replaced, you know, or, or rebuilt and saved.
Next question.
I have a question along the lines of the location of the, the town. One of the main sidewalks is on Montgomery Street that goes down to the town hall, which goes down to the new roundabout. It is just filthy and I, I like to walk outside and I've started walking at church instead of walking outside because you have to keep crossing the street on Montgomery Street to avoid all the, it's just ugly, it's just limbs and, and debris and, I mean, that's the main road. I'm not saying all the sidewalks, but I think Montgomery Street down to the post office should be kept a little cleaner. Do we have any kind of program to clean the sidewalks, just the, the main ones? Because I've had friends come from out of town, um, my friend Dr. Anna and she was, she was really saying this is a beautiful town, but man, look at that, I mean, when you first come into town, you see this ugly sidewalks and, I mean, that's right in front of your house.
Absolutely.
Jason and Alicia, so, I mean, that, that would be the main one I'd like to see cleaned up.
So, so a couple of weeks ago, our sanitation department actually went through there and, and they, they trimmed all the gutters and they sprayed, uh, grass killers, weed killers, so on so forth. The, the administrator just had all of the sidewalks and all of the structure, the, the old structure at the town hall. All of that just was pressure washed as well. So, the effort is to, yes, clean up moving outside of, you know, town hall. We started with town hall, um, trying to get that pretty of course, and then, and then start working our way around. As far as sidewalks, now that the roundabout is finished, we're going to have a lot more monies because we, we were having to, to put all of our, our monies that, that, that we get from like fuel taxes and such. We were having to put all that into the roundabout. Now that it's finished, we can start using that to, to replace and repair sidewalks, grind them for ADA, traffics and, and things like that. So, the effort is there, we're, we're just trying to move piece by piece with what monies we do have.
That falls back and people clean up in front of their activity, so.
Yes, sir. Yes.
It's not hard to do.
Absolutely, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, we've, you know, as a church, we cleaned our sidewalks up there and, and the, and down there in front, uh, uh, El, um, Montgomery there in front of the, uh, church office, we cleaned those sidewalks too, we pressure washed those too. It makes a lot of difference, it does make a lot of difference.
Yeah, they were covered in black. They were slippery when they were wet. I mean, it was, it was unreal, so, yeah.
A lot of those houses on Montgomery are owned by older people who are not gonna be able to get out there and get fallen limbs and that sort of thing up.
That's where I usually come in.
Yeah, I'm saying five years ago, I cleaned mine out.
That was my next comment I was gonna make was, you know, a lot of people are elderly and they're on fixed incomes. They can't afford to have someone come and do it. How willing would all of you be to go and help those people? To do the things that they're unable to do, sorry.
I'm sorry. Uh, the point about what we touched on earlier is potentially, you know, have the town meetings, kind of like what this seems to be turned into. But, you know, maybe once a month, pick, pick one place we're gonna focus on and see if we can get people together and, you know, if everybody wanna go clean up the sidewalks on Montgomery Street this Saturday, you know, somebody show up with an edge or somebody show up with a pressure washer, you know, people work together, you know, and get out there and clean that spot up, you know, and this, this community involvement, I mean, I'm, I'm as willing as anyone to get involved with it.
I think this is great. I'm motivated about it, no matter what the outcome is, I'm ready to get it done, you know.
Doesn't Spartmer City Water do that, do clean buildings out and all, with that big vacuum they got?
Yes, so, so the, the county, that's a county road, state road. So, the, the state DOT, SEDOT through Spartmer County actually does come periodically and, and remove the debris that's in that gutter line on Stone and Montgomery.
Yeah, like leaves and stuff, they don't.
That's correct.
They mess with the limbs and all.
That's also something you can call them and complain to them about and they'll generate a work order. That, that might be the route to get you to start with.
Let's steer our questions back toward the campaign. Uh, any more questions for the candidates? Okay, are there any questions online?
Um, someone asked about the pothole that's right next to the town hall that needs to be repaired.
Okay, that's a town meeting. Anything else? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate you being here. Uh, if you all would like, they will stay after. If anyone would like to talk to them individually, you're welcome to do that. And we're gonna close in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for this day. We thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us. We ask Father that you would go with us from this place and continue to watch over us throughout the day. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, everyone.